You know, three quarters of an inch to an inch in caliber and size and really good variety, really good stuff that comes from here. We did get a seventh tree because we hosted the Western Community Forestry Program out here. It was over in Fort Robinson this year, so all the eastern arborists and everything came out this year. Bad thing was it was during our fire in north of Crawford and kind of postponed some of the stuff. We had activities planned for that. But it was nice to see the rest of the eastern folks that wanted to come out. We had the folks from Fort Collins Nursery where some of the stock comes from, had some good conversations with them because a couple of them weren't very good looking root balls and that's what we try to make sure everybody gets is good trees. And then in addition to that, the garden club just gave us a tree. They put a memorial tree in Memorial Park for Betty Stall and we planted that last week. So actually we planted, anyway with the forestry program, they gave us a tree which was a sycamore because last year we found a sycamore leaf and we couldn't figure out where it came from. Well, it was Doak Nickerson, our old forester from here. He has a sycamore in his backyard. It's the only one in town because it's not on our tree inventory. We couldn't figure out where the sycamore leaves came from. So we hunted that down. So now we have two planted here in Shatter. So and then we got the new one from the garden club, which they gave us an oak tree and planted that in Memorial Park. So that's over by the, north of the sand volleyball court. And I was talking to Lou Jensen this afternoon and they're talking about putting a plaque on that one. We have several trees in the park that have plaques on them. So I think they're going to put a plaque on that one for Betty Stall too. So good program, really cost savings. The city shattered probably three or four thousand dollars for the trees here that we got for nothing. So just wanted to give a shout out to the Nebraska Forest Service for helping us out. And with that, I gotta mention one more thing to you, just because I'm talking about the Nebraska Forest Service. We did have a deer meeting and Gaiman Parks came to us and donated us the materials to fence in the community garden.
Really?
Yes. And we have the materials on site already. So we are going to be fencing in the community garden next year to keep the deer out, which I wanted to give a shout out to Gaiman Parks for doing that.
How tall fences are?
It's eight foot and then it'll have a barbed wire on top of it.
Oh, wow.
So it'll help keep that out. So it's kind of some breaking news, but I wanted to share it. I know it's not on your agenda, but I wanted to share it with you a little bit tonight. So it's a plus and I wanted to give them a shout out because they already delivered it to us. So.
Do you want to explain to them why they were trying to do that?
With our program, yeah, we had a meeting with everybody. Again, we do it annually and Chief Hickstein and Gabe, Lieutenant Walls were there. And we, we tried to eradicate some of the deer, but you know, numbers are down. So we didn't want to shoot as many as we have been. But this is just an opportunity of another way of deterring. They have programs for ranchers to do this on their hay yards, their stack yards. So that's why we got it. And just an opportunity to help keep them out of, deter them away from town. I mean, that's just a big old green light, come here and eat free, you know. So hopefully the patrons of the garden will enjoy that. It'll be a little less access than they had before because there's not gates included with it. We do have a couple of the gates that we had from the airport that we saved. So we're going to use that and rebuild them. So but this is a zero cost to us, just install cost. So this is a big, big plus because that's a bunch of money too. But I just wanted to give that a shout out to real quick.
Take away their salad bowl.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us know, Scott.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is Shatterton State College requests for additional handicaps stalls. Carrie Gaswick's here. Please introduce yourself. So out there in TV land, everybody can hear you.
Carrie Gaswick, I'm the Vice President for Administration and Finance at Shatterton State College. And one of those things is parking and access to our facilities. Memorial Hall has some challenges in terms of access for parking lots. One of the things that we're actually addressing as part of our plan to renovate Memorial Hall, I don't know when we'll get funding for that is the problem. And so this is an interim request to be able to convert two regular stalls on that north of our Dean's Green is what we call it of the campus, where we've got two handicap spots right now. We'd like to ask for four stalls. We have a lot of community individuals who attend the events and a lot of them are in need of a closer parking spot because they're differently abled or less mobile than other individuals. So any questions?
That parking along there is not, no designated parking stickers.
No, no, no. They can park there without any type of, those are the city stalls.
Anyone have any questions?
I have no problem with two more.
I think Dustin.
Dustin?
I would like to stay.
Gaswick?
Hi, I'm Dustin Street. So you're, you want to add two more next to the two that you have there? In order to do that, you'll have to actually take out three stalls. I suggested that we move them down to the farther east end where there's already the crosshatches. So you could just already paint over the crosshatches that are blue. So there would be two on this side and then two on this side. And then you would have to eliminate a third, third stall.
I think we could look at that and come back to you.
So that would add how many more feet? I'm just thinking ADA.
Yeah, it would be, it would be quite a distance. We could look at that though. I mean, as an option. You can look at that and get ahold of Tom if that works, if that's okay with you guys. Because I don't know how many feet that is off the top. It would be closer to Brooks Hall than it is Memorial Hall. So it's a considerable distance. Tom had asked me if we, if we minded losing three parking stalls to get two handicapped and our opinion was no. We, we didn't mind, but I don't know how the city feels about that.
So, so what are the, what'd you say was on the southern end?
Far east end, there's already crosshatches.
For, for what though?
Like the end of the parking stall. So you measured out parking stalls.
Could we just add the extra one there?
That's what he suggested.
Yeah. So if you added, so she's saying the two that are already there, she added two more. But if you added those two and took them further down to the east end, you would, instead of making a third one in the middle.
When we're having this discussion, would you come up here so we can get adequately required?
So you're good, you would have your two stalls here on the west end, at 10th and Main. Right. And then you would have the two here at the east end, at the loop.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's, there's sort of ADA ones at the other end then too?
No.
No. Oh, just that, okay.
So at the other end, they're regular parking stalls, but there's white crosshatches.
Then just put it up on the air on the screen. So if you're looking at getting to you.
Point to where those, those?
Right, right where you're at. Yep, nothing but one of there.
Where those two cars are.
See that? That car right there, right there.
Yep, right there.
Here to put the ADA stalls right there.
Yeah.
Not only could those, could it help Memorial Hall, it could also help the parking for the new building that you're going to be installing.
I'm not worried about the parking for the new building because we're going to utilize that parking lot to the east of the building.
Okay, but it could also help your parking for Kreitz Hall, where you only have, I think, one part ADA parking stall for Kreitz Hall.
For Kreitz, we typically use the U that's in campus.
Right. Because there's what, one or two spots in there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're saying if you put two more next to the two already?
Yeah, then you would have to take out a third one. Yes.
So, so if we did that and then not have the crosshatch at the other end?
It's not enough crosshatches at the other end to make another parking stall.
The crosshatches at the other end are going to have to stay, whether we utilize them for these ADA stalls or not, they have to stay there.
Yeah. That's why I suggested that we do the two at the far east end. And then you just have to paint over the white ones and paint the crosshatches that are already there.
Because you're saying you have to have that space, was it five feet or whatever?
Yeah.
Between?
Yeah, it's, it's at least five feet. The problem with this parking here on 10th Street is it's public parking. It's not just for the college. You have 11 apartments across the street to the north that have no private parking at all, that utilize this parking lot. You take three more parking stalls away for, that you're going to be taking parking away from those apartment complex, that apartment complex also. So you have to think about that too. The M Hall parking stalls are typically being used after hours.
Yep.
So I mean, you got it, you got to weigh it in both directions here.
Right.
And I know this isn't going to be really popular. My next statement is if you look at the, the other aerial that I supplied for you is that there is parking west of M Hall that the college owns, that they could designate all kinds of ADA parking that's a walk away.
The only problem is there's no access.
There's no access on the west side of that block. You're correct.
Yeah. So they'd have to go around the building and it would actually be farther away than taking the east, those east slots.
Yeah, the two east slots.
Flip back to the other aerial again, Jen. I'm guessing that parking stalls at the east end of this block that we're talking are probably less than 250 feet away from the two stalls that are already designated. I didn't measure it, but I'm guessing because the block, the block is only, it's 100 feet to the alley and another 100 feet to the other side. So it's less than 250 feet from the two parking stalls right now.
Is there a convenient sidewalk between the south end of M Hall and the north side of Edna work?
Not really. It's pretty tight.
That's why I was wondering if some handicap.
It's not a good.
It's not ideal.
It's not a good sidewalk.
No. It's one of our many challenges with Memorial Hall.
And speaking to the, the apartments sharing the parking on the city side of things and then the need for the ADA for Memorial Hall, speaking specifically to the request of ADA parking for Memorial Hall, it seems like it's a hand in a glove there. And I get it, not wanting to lose those three spots because we take in, like you said, it takes three spots to equal two spots. But speaking specifically to what the request is, it shows how spoiled we are. Because if we're talking about able-bodied people walking an extra 50 feet versus ADA needs to go across the street, that's something I'm willing to tell them. They're going to have to just learn how to do it.
During events, there's the parking on the south side of Admin.
Yeah.
Plenty. That's where I usually go.
Yep.
Yeah. For the, the folks who need the parking.
Which is, which is a walk away. Yeah.
I, I'm more inclined to let them do it on the two spots and lose three. To me, that's a small cost.
And how, I mean, I thought it was like five or six feet you needed between those two. So if, what I'm thinking is if it's only five or six feet and those, that west end is five or six feet, maybe, maybe we wouldn't lose that third one.
You're going to have to lose it because you're, because of the spacing.
Spacing, okay.
Of the parking stall. And quite honestly, because you're going to lose that third stall, we should probably, if, if that's where you want it, we should establish one as a van accessible.
Sure. Here's the space we've got. Make it all.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to, we're going to lose, we're going to lose that third stall anyway, if that's where you want it. And then we should stripe it as a van accessible.
Right.
And we're willing to help with whatever.
Yeah. And then I wasn't too clear, but it said that I was kind of under the impression you guys would stripe it.
And sign it?
Yes.
And sign it, okay. It would have to flip flop from your guys' handicaps on campus because you guys got the white boxes and the blue guys.
Yeah, I will just work with you guys.
If that's, I mean, if that's where you want it, then I would recommend that we do the van accessible.
Do we need a motion or can we just give direction to do that? I would make the motion that we support the addition of two handicaps parking stalls on the south side of 10th Street toward the east of the four-way stop sign, making one of those van accessible to utilize all the available space.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Shane.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Allow the college to do that, including making it van accessible. Could we have roll
call please?
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Okay. Jake Stewart discussing his proposed lease.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Parks, you missed a heck of a volleyball game. Sorry you had to be here. So they went into kind of a triple overtime, if that helps you out any. So both of our daughters play for the eighth grade team. Jake Stewart, Executive Director for Swan, 435 Chapin Street here in Shatterton. So folks, here before you, I sent some stuff out into your packets. The council had asked for some engineering drawings so that you could see kind of the flow of traffic coming in there. You should have all received this here that shows going over the scale. There's actually another one, if you wanted to look at it, that kind of shows the trucks when we remove the old scale so that the city still has access coming right in there. So they're not having to come over the scale every time Dustin and his crew need to come in for dirt, asphalt, whatever they're needing to do. So that's kind of how that works. We did have the survey done by Panhandle Land Surveying. That's Don Brush out of Sioux County. He's also the Dawes County surveyor that helps us out. Him and his son do a great job. So that is in place. And so what we're looking at is the architect for chief building has already been talking to contractors about dirt, utilities. Everything is moving forward, but we need to know that we are still in that motion of trying to get this agreement signed so that we can close that out this month. So I'm kind of here requesting kind of that as we can move forward to get stuff to start plowing in, start moving some dirt. The agreement's here. Adam, I think we did get some clarification on the plot.
There is. I'll tell you, Jake, that I'm at with city administrators, there's some other changes that are coming.
Okay. Okay. So as far as, do you want to touch on those while we're here?
Well, I'm not going to negotiate a lease.
No, no, I just need to, that way I can.
Some of them would be involved length of term.
Okay.
Just some clarification language regarding the, what the city's retaining across the property.
Oh, sure, sure.
I believe there's some discussion in this about impound law of the northwest corner. I don't think on the map. That may be a typo. It could be the northeast corner. That's, that we're going to have to work on that as far as fencing that or it's going to be specifically.
And you guys are still wanting to keep that over there in that spot? Talking to Dustin, we were, have been moving vehicles over on the other side of the city building for the last couple of months.
I think we need to talk about, with the police department to see and, and talk with Dustin too as well to make sure we got a good spot for Jake.
Sure, sure.
Just, just so we got some clarification.
There's some language regarding the term, should the lease, I would terminate and the improvements. Again, we'll get something to Amy.
Okay.
Adam, I have a question about the assignment.
I, I have that on my list as well. Language, language I would put in there, it's again, we'll send this to Swan's council. I want it clear that it'd be for same or similar use if we're going to.
I didn't anticipate that you're selling out to waste management, but.
No, but I think, but I think, well, and same similar use would probably include waste management, but we also don't need a car dealership if they decide. And I know that's, but I just think we need to cross that T.
Right. Clarify. Because yep, that is, that is what this is for. You got to, you got to remember, when we pull into this lot and we start setting this up, the state of Nebraska with Olson Engineering, this will be the permitted site. There isn't anything else that can go on that site according to NDEE. It is for solid waste. If we were to take liquid waste in, we'd be in trouble. So that's what we've got to remember is there's no other outside that line.
And I get that, but this also leads us to believe that you could assign it to somebody else that's not in the waste management business at all, that the permit, it becomes annuity. So we just want clarification that it would be similar. If you were assigning, say Swan, the Nebraska government changes the rules and they have to reorganize that or some different entity that you need to assign it to, the city's fine in a sense that it's for what it is, but we don't want it assigned to some.
Sure. So we need to clarify that.
Third party that's not in the business.
Yep. We can make sure and clarify that so that we know this is for waste and waste only.
You know, the easement, you put the easement, I just got some touch-up language to go on that to clarify where that's going to be.
And Janet and I worked pretty close together on that, making sure that we did have that access right in that corner.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the surveyors coming up or has come up with an easement or a legal to show exactly where that's going to be. There's a couple of other little things, Jake, that I'll try to get something over to her. And I'll try to do it this week. Granted, I'm going to Omaha for the rest of the week.
Sure.
But we'll try to put something together remotely if I can.
Okay. Sounds good. Would that be a possibility that with all the changes, everything going through there, that maybe on the 21st, we would be able to have some kind of a motion to get the signatures together to close out the month?
I think I'm, I think I'm, I don't want to speak with my city manager and say that we'll be, we'll work to get ready, Jake.
Sure, sure. I just, what I'm, what I'm worried about is trying to push back contractors and everything like that. So as far as legal goes, is there something that the city council can do where we can at least move forward as we're buttoning up the lease agreement?
We could certainly put it on the next agenda. I mean, that way we, we know. Again, I can't speak with the city manager because these are concerns that we discussed today.
Okay.
I don't know.
I, I'm good with putting it on the agenda and then hopefully we can get to the agreement taken care of.
The hope, the hope, Jake, is in the next two weeks, we'll have enough back and forth to get this all but down so they can approve it. That would be the goal. Okay?
I don't know how busy Amy is and I know Adam's gone for the next week, so.
We will do everything possible to get an agreement that we're happy with before you.
Sounds good. Do you guys have any other questions for me, council, on what we're trying to do here, what we're putting together?
Starting to get exciting.
Yeah. When we scratch ground, there's going to be a lot of sighs of relief coming when they still might have to wait, you know, four or five months for the approved, not the approval, but for the finished work to be able to set that baler in. Luckily, each month we put repairs into that baler. It just, we're just limping it along. So the scary thing is, and always remember that, you know, we go outside the community to bring all that trash in. And so remember, Shatterton would be very tough because if we can't go out and bail this trash, we're probably going to send Shatterton people north.
One other thing that, that we didn't have with this, there's supposed to be an attachment A.
Attachment A?
Attachment A, which I think is the consideration side of this, as far as what Swan's doing for the city. We don't have attachment A, so we don't know what that would be. So that, that would be something Amy, you and Amy could work on.
And what they're doing for the city?
Well, I think that's the consideration portion of this. It's the in-kind language, basically service in lieu of rent. So it's, it's, and it describes an exhibit A attached here too, but nobody has an exhibit A.
And in context, when you look at it again, you'll see what we're talking about.
Sounds good. Anything else you guys can think of?
No. Taking over, didn't you tell me you're taking over Hemmingford now too?
Taking over Hemmingford. We've been in there for three weeks. So we took over all of Crawford December of 23. We've now taken over all of Hemmingford and northern Box Buke County as of three weeks ago. So we're in the middle of purchase agreement with H&amp;H because they're pulling out. So some of the local residents around here, if you were in Dawes County and actually even Sheridan County, H&amp;H made a little loop up through there. Those are all gone. No more rule like that. So there is, there is resources through stump sanitation for picking that up, but a lot of them folks will have to figure out another plan to make sure and get that waste into us.
So did you have to buy our new truck?
New, the new truck is already ordered. We should have that hopefully the middle of November, George. So right now we're using two old backups that we are plugging away and throwing parts at. But luckily, we've got a really good resource in Rapid City with Adams. So they're able to rebuild almost anything we take up pump-wise.
How's your schedule on your baler coming? Is it still on set to do it over?
Yep, yep. So right now, they are looking at, with the engineer, we're looking at trying to get dirt work in three weeks, trying to get that started. That's why this is so important, trying to make sure this agreement is buttoned up or at least, you know, some kind of agreement that we can move forward where we're finishing the agreement in the process. They've moved it back one time. And the good thing about altitude is they said, we really never have a request to pull it out of assembly and let somebody else jump in front of you. But there are so many of these getting made throughout the country that it just made the next company very, very happy that we were able to get leapfrogged and they got their baler done. So yeah, as far as that goes, we're still looking at the end of November to be able to hopefully place that in concrete on the pad and we may be building the structure up and over it. So anything else you think of?
Jake, I, I might be typing on my phone for my classes, but I'll try to get something.
Sounds good. All right. I'll make sure Amy kind of keeps after you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jake.
Next on the agenda is a motion to accept Miles Bannon's resignation as city council members. And before we do that, I'd like to read this, the letter that he sent to me. This letter serves as official notice that I must resign my position on the city council as I will be moving away from Shatterton. I've taken a promotion with the postal service and will be moving to Lincoln, Nebraska on September 29th, 2024. This letter was dated September 26th, 2024. Serving on the Shatterton City Council has been an honor and one of my, one of the finest privileges of my career. The decision to leave was a difficult one, but I look back on my council career with great pride. Over the course of 10 years on the council, I've been fortunate enough to have a part in many big and small steps forward for the city. I hope that the current council will continue the progress and growth of the community and look forward to hearing of your continued success. It is my firm belief that Shatterton does best when the city council pursues new opportunities and looks ahead to the future. Projects like the Aquatic Center, Downtown Plaza, and the many infrastructure upgrades we have completed all help build a brighter future for our community members. Finally, I would like to convey my thanks and highest regards to the city staff and the volunteers on all our various boards and commissions. I know that the city of Shatterton is in good hands. I miss getting to see you all and serve the city together. All the best to you. Sincerely, Miles Bannon.
I'll make a motion that we accept Miles' resignation.
Second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane to accept Miles' resignation. Can we have roll call please?
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Okay. Now we have a discussion on fulfilling the council member's vacancy. We want to do it, in, in my mind, the procedure, and someone could tell me I'm all wet. But we would have to ask for people to submit requests to be appointed, that we could take action the next meeting. And then they would be able to be sworn in in November. So they would be voting at the November meeting, the two November meetings and the first part of the December meeting until the new council members are sworn, sworn in. So question to me is, is it worth the effort?
That's where I'm at. With only three, he was, Miles Bannon was about to complete his term. With only three meetings, I, it seems more like a lot of formality for not much net result.
I think all of us are going to be.
Yeah. If we had.
If we had anything coming up where we may be having some council members needing to take time away from a meeting or two because of prior engagements, but that hasn't been what I'm hearing. I, I intend to be here for the next three meetings. For, for what it would take and what we would get as a council, I don't, I don't see the net benefit.
I agree, I think it was a longer, longer period of time. It would make sense. I think the only benefit would be if there was someone that was potentially interested in pursuing, uh, being on the city council. It might give them a taste for it to see if they were interested or not, but I don't know how helpful that would be to.
I had one gentleman stop me, but he wasn't ever interested in running.
Yeah. Well, this, this time of year too, budget is, you know, our budget is approved. It's kind of the lull before the Christmas break and before the, the new council is seated, so it's. I just don't see a lot of media issues that would need a, a full five council members.
So seems consensus that we have no action, do we need any motion for no action?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Some changes I'll let you know next week.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the claims as listed in our packet, so.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane. The list is somewhat shorter, a lot shorter than usual since we had the final payment at the end of September, um. I, I asked Tom about, because I had remembered Bittner Construction having another, uh, wastewater ditch cleanup or something in a prior meeting and I asked him to clarify that. And he said this was on the West Second Street, um, project and I don't remember what the other one was. And I think they were similar amounts. And the other, only other thing that U L LLC, it says Fire Department Ladders and that was for inspection of the ladder truck.
Oh. We didn't get new ladders, we just had inspections though.
The invoices sometimes aren't very specific.
It's expensive to do that check.
Hmm?
It's an expensive check.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anyone have any other questions? If not, everyone call please.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. City manager report.
Thank you, George. Um, just a reminder, as we're getting ready to go into the winter months, weeds, grass, overhanging branches, trash, things like that, we do have city trucks available for the, um, diala truck which we can get picked up and that phone number is four three two zero five two eight. Um, for those kind of, uh, things that are out there. Um, and I would also caution people to start looking at the snow removal. If you're not gonna be physically capable of doing the snow removal, now's the time to start talking to the contractors out there who are able to do some of those things and get organized, let them see it before the snow actually starts falling. Um, the last thing is, is I just wanted to update the council on the eight forty-one Maple, uh, Maple Street apartments. Uh, we did, uh, get ahold of our contractor who is in the process of taking that building down. And, uh, I'm pretty pleased to say as of today, he should be ninety-nine percent done.
Really?
And he's going to be, uh, putting in a vault for protection of our water surfaces for the other building. And, uh, we're moving forward with this project. And if you had any questions individually, you'd be more than welcome to give us a call or, or drive by there and, and see what we got going on. So just wanted to give the update on that for everything, okay? Other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Uh, we do not need a resolution to excuse any council members. Council closing comments, we'll start with Mark.
Well, it's been a busy, busy few, few days, as Kerry can probably attest with, uh, Harvest Moon Festival and and the events of Creative Arts District and the Fire Hall with the open house. Uh, I think they were all very well attended, I enjoyed everything that I went to, it was getting good. So, um, it takes a, takes a community that is involved. Uh, I also participated in the Hungry Cow, so, uh, if you don't participate in these things, they go away and then it also affects, uh, the donations to the fire department and, and the other organizations. So it's why I'm glad to see all the participants out there.
Yeah. Well, I, I would like to say I heard the Harvest Moon Festival went really well. Um, it's a, it's a good, it's a good thing to have in Shadrin and I think it's, it's always nice having festivals like that, bringing in people and filling the streets. Um, sure helps the economics. And another thing I'd like to remind people of is October first, you're supposed to have trailers and campers off the streets. Is it November? Mick Downing is wrong. Okay, okay, he is a newbie, all right. All right, I stand corrected.
We appreciate the interest. You have anything else?
No, I'm, I'm. Yeah, thanks to everyone that supported the V F D spaghetti feed, that's always a great thing. I'm embarrassed to say I didn't make it this year, I had some family commitments that day, but I've always enjoyed it in the past. The Harvest Moon Festival was out of this world. I thought we had some kind of baseball softball tournaments going on because of the parking overflow, I was very impressed and everyone I talked to, uh, that day, which is a lot of people, they were all from out of town. And they had heard good things about it, so they made a special trip to Shadrin just to see it. And so that was, uh, they were, they were all enjoying themselves as well, that was great to hear from them. Um, I wanna remind everyone that tomorrow is the candidate forum, right here in the city council chambers at six P M. Come hear your candidates, answer questions. Uh, it's, uh, something I've enjoyed as a candidate and I really enjoyed as a citizen and active voter as well. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, some folks that I have not thanked in the past and that is our umpires and referees. I happened to have a chance to visit with a few of them the other day and I was very appreciative of their contributions. And, um, it makes sense because everything is short on volunteers or this is actually, you know, you get a little stipend with these things, but uh, we're short on umpires and volunteers as well, umpires and referees. And so, um, just like our fraternal organizations like Lions Rotary Club, um, all of the organizations, I'm sure I'm forgetting some of them, our church boards, things like that. Um, we're all short on bodies. And so if you want to see these athletic events that, uh, we're very much an identity of every community continue, uh, we need umpires, we need referees, we need people to do those kinds of things. And I can tell you from experience, just by thanking them, I was very actively recruited to become one. So all you have to do is, uh, say something to them and you will get all kinds of websites and pamphlets thrust upon you. Uh, and it's something that I, you know, we need it, so thanks to those folks who do that. Uh, thanks to the sportsmanship that they help harbor and I hope people consider that because it's very much, uh, something we need, we're in shortage of.
Well, um, I pretty well covered everything, um, that I had on my list, but a couple of things, um, I wanted, it seemed sort of strange, um, except for when I was on the council previously, Donna Russ was always here. She did take maybe one or two times she was missing and had a substitute take minutes for her. But, um, after more than fifty years, um, kind of a strange thing and wanna thank Miles, um, for his work, uh, on the council. Um, one thing that wasn't mentioned, I don't think, and we were out of town, was History and Action Day. I assume that that went well, it always does. Sorry to have to miss that, um. And this last Friday before the Harvest Moon Festival, they had a Creative Arts District, had a few things going on down here and of course, and then you gotta enjoy a good Shadrin State football game, a good Shadrin High Football Game. And even, we can watch TV and Nebraska even won, so what a, what a.
And the Broncos.
And the Broncos, so, so what a, what a sports event. And I especially wanna thank the volunteer firemen for their spaghetti feed. Really nice, so. And I think I missed something, but there's always an art show, a display or a guest speaker at the college going on just about any time you look. Or if you research, you can find one, so. That's all I have, so I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that one.
I make a motion, I made a motion, seconded by Shane. Can we have roll call please?
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.